Get started and all of them with a prayer. Lord, thank you for the opportunity again to come and assemble here this morning and take up the business that comes before us. And Lord, as I think about our agenda today, I think about the men that lead our departments and how they serve the county. And I want to lift each one of them up to you for all that they do. We answer the call, we set up emergency operations, we take care of roads and bridges in our county. And Lord, we take care of the facility here and all its complexities. And I just thank, thank you for the gifts that you've given those individuals that allow them to fulfill their responsibility. And Lord, they do it well and we're grateful for that. And we're grateful for our community that supports the county in our efforts to continually look at the resources we have available and to use those as wisely as we can invest those for the good of all. Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank you again for this opportunity to meet. And may everything we do this morning honor you. In your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, we have minutes. I bet they've been reviewed September thirtieth. And with that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes is written from September thirtieth.
Motion to second approve minutes is presented for discussion. See now if they say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have department updates. And James, you have thirty minutes because none of your peers are here.
Alone and afraid, right?
Take your three-minute or five-minute update and stretch that into thirty. So you're covering four is what I'm saying.
So as I can express questions. So, um, for the month of September, dispatchers logged four thousand eight hundred twenty-six cat injuries called for service. Approximately seventy percent of those come into twelve different categories. We answered one hundred and twenty-four different alarm calls from alarm companies. We provided assist to both citizens, motorists, and additional agencies, three hundred and two calls. There were eleven, one hundred and eleven disturbances across the county. EMS responded to three hundred and twenty-six different calls. We had a hundred and sixty-five motor vehicle accidents of various, ranging from non-injury to injury. LE conducted over eight hundred and seventeen separate patrols, fire responded to forty-eight natural cover fires, and also responded to thirteen structural fires for the month. We all, we transferred, or I should say, law enforcement agencies answered four hundred and thirty-eight phone calls, which basically refers to questions or follow-ups that the community are calling in, whether they have a case or they have a question that either a deputy or law enforcement agency has to answer. We transfer those to them. Six hundred and twenty-nine traffic-related events, one hundred and twenty-four well checks. And then law enforcement responded to two hundred and twenty-four various suspicious activities, persons, or items, which is a total of three thousand three hundred and twenty-one calls for service. We've been tracking our call volume through our analytic software. On, we anticipate a final report on November eleventh of twenty twenty-five. That'll mark the one-year consolidation for all of our operations downstairs. Currently, we're, we're looking at how quickly we're picking up calls. We're anticipating over a hundred and five inbound phone calls for the, a hundred and five thousand inbound phone calls for the year. With, and when we do the final analytics, I can break out what was an emergency call coming through on one of the nine alarm lines, how many are coming through wireless service providers, IP addresses, or your traditional hard lines. And then we're also tracking an estimate of about twenty-eight thousand outbound calls. So anytime we transfer a call that comes into the center that has to go to, say, a deputy or an officer, that constitutes an inbound and an outbound call. The dispatch center, we're currently set, thirteen of seventeen of our full-time employees. We've got two of two of our part-time employees. We've completed five dis, we have five dispatchers that are finishing their one-year training program. We have four dispatchers at this point that are nationally certified through AppCo. We anticipate, we have training already scheduled and paid for through the rest of the year. So by the end of the year, we'll be at six of our thirteen will be nationally certified. And then our training program continues on into next year. The advisory board provided a recommended training for, for my on, or my onboarding that covered six years' worth of different training events that need to be accomplished. I am currently complete with the first year of the recommended training. I have one more training event scheduled for this year that'll give me two years complete on the recommended training program. And then the last thing also revolving around training, this is a future program. We've coordinated for some professional development training. It'll be free here for our dispatchers. We have two classes that'll be given. One's called Call Taking to Intelligence Gathering. And the other one is Dispatcher Liability. It's provided by Angie Stefferman. She's a dispatch supervisor from Jefferson City Police Department. She's been dispatching for like thirty-two years. And she's a, one of our state trainers that routinely does a presentation and classes throughout the year, traveling around as well as at our state conferences. That training will be conducted seventeen October from four to six P.M. All of my dispatchers will be at that training. Myself and two of our, two supervisors are going to cover the desk for a couple of hours so they can all attend. We open that up to our surrounding partners, depending on head count, of who they will be able to send for that free training as well. OEM's given us use of their EOC to handle the amount of people that we anticipate could show up. So, other than that, that's all I've got. Any questions?
Hundred dollars for an hour.
Yep, just seven dollars.
So is that it? Does your hundred-dollar fee include lunch?
No lunch. That'd be more than a hundred dollars.
James, I understand you and Randy have a meeting to go to. So I'm gonna hold off on any questions that I have. I, I appreciate your report and appreciate what you're doing down there. Guys, travel safe. Randy, you're next.
Okay, probably two minutes. We are going to mount the weather station, the new upgraded weather station on the sixteenth, if you want to attend, in Conway at about ten-thirty. We're gonna use the fire apparatuses for the ladder truck. Hopefully just come when we can, we can do it in-house. To do that, it'll take about an hour, I guess, to do it. We have a straight-line site where all the storms will be coming in. This time won't be a building between us, so it should work really good. And, uh, and it will be wire-direct to National Weather Service. They will be using it as one of their response locations to help with their forecast. So we're real proud of that. We are going to be extremely shorthanded over here, try to keep the doors open next four days. But I don't know how that's gonna work out. Joe's gonna be the doorkeeper. So, uh, everybody, Tina and Jackie and David and I will be at the SEMA conference with Director Falls as well. The SEMA conference this year is down on attendance for a couple of reasons. And then on top of that, you know, the, the federal layoff has affected it. So some of the federal training-type programs might be hindered a little bit this year. I don't think a lot, National Weather Service for one. You know, they're furloughed, they can't travel, they can't do out-of-the-area stuff. But they're gonna continue to do their slots and some of the meteorologists are gonna volunteer at the time so the SEMA conference can, you know, can get benefit of the National Weather Service. So we'll be out of pocket till Friday, late afternoon of the day. I am, I am coming back tonight and I will be firing sirens tomorrow, bar any bad weather. And then after I fire the sirens, I'll head back that way. I think the warehouse is, on our parts, finished. You know, it's, it's, uh, it's usable. And I think within the next month, you know, we'll have it kind of reorganized a little bit up front and make it a little more easy access, you know, for the things we need to get in and out of there. But other than that, I think Joe's done it. This Joe, and this Eric, and this Randy, and my Joe have done a tremendous job. So I think that backend's free to do whatever, I believe. Isn't that right?
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah. Did, uh, do you know what the Sheriff's Department's gotten in and gotten their seats and consoles out in that middle part?
They had not.
Okay.
Thursday, Friday of last week.
I'll get back prepared on that again. I mean, you mentioned their Conway for that deal. Do you have a time? You said the sixteenth, but?
Ten-thirty.
Ten-thirty?
Yeah, sixteenth at ten-thirty.
Okay, I missed that. Okay.
It'll take about an hour. But it'll be, it'll be a good PR thing, I believe. And the public love it. I don't know how many calls from that area, you know, when it done. It just, it takes that long to do the backend of the paperwork, you know, otherwise we would've already had it up. So, but that's just around the corner.
And it's there on the school campus?
So it's gonna be at the south end of the building now.
Okay.
The very south end. And we picked a hole that is less than thirty feet from a window and an outlet inside. So we've got a direct shot this time. We're not going through a building or any other rooms. We're confident it's gonna work really well, really well. And that'll be a hydrologist information center for Leclae County. That'll be the hydrologist, you know, the one center that tells what the rainfall actually was, which would be pretty neat. Now, realize it could change from there to Bennett to here, you know. But that one will be the reporting entity for National Weather Service. So it's pretty cool. It does take a little more maintenance than the others, the old ones. So once a month, we'll have to go make sure that the, a little collecting cup is clean and free of dust and debris and leaves and all that. That's the only, but I, but I think that maybe the school will put that on their regular maintenance, train them up on how to do that. It's pretty simple. So we won't have to do it and carry a ladder hopefully. And this is gonna be, uh, my plan is to have it at twenty-two feet in here. So it should be pretty accurate.
Any questions for Randy?
Nope, leaving good.
All right, Randy, thank you for that report. You gentlemen are ready to roll if, if you need to. You're welcome to stay. But I think you, you need to be on the road, so drive safe. Thank you for your report. Was that all that you had?
That's all I had.
That's all you had?
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys. Be safe.
Next, I'll take up Rogan Bridge. Jared, good morning.
Yeah.
Good morning, Jared.
Good morning.
You're up.
I'm up.
You're up.
Uh, Rogan Bridge has been busy. We just finished an asphalt patching. I spent around thirty-two thousand on asphalt. I've got thirty-seven, about thirty-two thousand asphalt to the whole of our patch or road back up. Getting ready to crack seal. That'd be another process to maintain our asphalt roads. And I'm actually waiting on a machine to get to me. They're gonna call me and hopefully within the next few days, I can get that machine to me. Let me know when it's there and I will pick it up and spray fill. We have just about got all of our culverts in. That was on the list, that was made up prior to Kevin here last year's stuff. That list is just, we're working on actually stuff, call in now on new culverts. That's kind of what I'm focusing on, all the previous lists. Except for a few, a few deals that is probably gonna get rolled over. Yeah. And that is not actually no driveway pipes, no cross pipes like that. That is some bigger stuff. Had a very, in the middle of a project right now on Sioux Drive. Just thankful that landowners can come together and we can work with them to regain our right-of-way back. We actually got a widening project taking place on Sioux Drive right now. But the landowner worked with us. He went in there and cleared out and let us go back in there and hit the ditch work and rebuild the road. And that's the process taking place as we speak today right now. Should be finished there hopefully on that. Getting covered back up with base rock today. We actually got another widening out on Jade Stone. Put another pipe in there last week and widened that, reclaimed the ditch line. So just kind of really getting into focusing on some of the bad areas of the road, trying to widen back out. And that's gonna be a continued process for quite some time, because we do have some narrow roads. And our brush cut, and I hope, I mean, I ain't heard too much, we finally got back up, kind of caught it on the, I don't know, down in the Eric's area there. I don't know if you heard too much. I haven't heard nothing from you guys.
No.
I think we're kind of getting back leased up with that. We're a pretty kind of, we're trying to chase it, you know, as much as we want to. Everything's moved on pretty good. If you have any questions?
Did you say Jasmine?
Chasteau.
Chasteau.
Chasteau, yeah.
Nope, most everything you seem to be gathering up on, staying caught up with as far as with what calls and stuff we come in with. Most of them have been, I think, pretty decent, you know. Everybody seems to be, like you said, the landowners there and other constituents out here, you know, they seem to be very understanding with a lot of it, so.
And then like I said, it helps so much that when we work together, we can get so much more accomplished.
Communication.
Yeah. And everything, seeing that take place. Very helpful, very helpful for my job, you know. Especially when we can, I was just really surprised though on our right-of-ways. I go around it quite a bit and I say, what's a right-of-way here, you know, because some of them does vary. And he looks it up, you know, but man, some of our roads have really gotten narrow. And, you know, somebody said you've got to back up and find a place that, in a driveway. So if you meet somebody, so you can get by, you know. So that's really gonna be a focus driven, is trying to get our roads back wider.
All right, any comments or questions for Jared? Okay. All right, Jared, I don't have any this morning, so if you want to stay, you can. But I bet you have a lot to, uh, to work on. So if you'd like to be excused, you are excused. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you.
All right, good morning, Mike.
Morning. Apologize for being a few minutes late. I had my head stuck in something and looked up at the time. Last time we talked about the cooling tower. It is, with that borrowed pump, we've got it, new chemicals back to normal. Keeping that maintained. I said we're on a borrowed pump. Rooftop unit six, it's working the way it's supposed to. It's got the right compressor put back in and rewired. It's working great. RTU seven, has had one of those unforeseeables. We blew a quarter-inch freon line hooked to a reversing valve. That leaked out a hundred pounds of freon, which luckily had happened sometime in the middle of the night because that freon kind of fogged itself into courtroom B. So we were able to air courtroom B out before anybody showed up that morning. That reversing valve was an expensive piece, just for a valve. It, it run about fifty-three hundred dollars just for that reversing valve. And of course, another eight hundred and seventy-one dollars for freon. But that unit now is up and running, not leaking any oil that we had previously leaking. And with all the maintenance we had done to it, it was running really good until that freon line broke. That freon line, uh, they have redesigned on their replacements. I guess apparently they probably have had barriers on that before. But that one's looking good. The bad one, RTU five, we're still waiting on Aon to give us an answer on what it's going to take to replace that board and control panel. Looking back in my notes, uh, that unit had been shutting itself off quite a bit beginning of the month. And prior to the leak that it went off, I had restarted it a couple of times. It was one or two times. Then I had to do it a second time. So that board was failing, you know. I'm, I'm guessing it, it, you know, usually if we have a power surge or something like that, or the power goes out, it'll shut some of those units off. And I was just believing that's what the problem was on that particular unit. But it was that board going out. We're trying to find a suitable five-volt power supply that we could put in there and get it up and running. But we haven't had any of that, on that one. But now the rest of it's up and running and ready to go. We had that compressor that was locked up on, it replaced. And it ran good for a day and then that board finally failed. No good, no good news on it yet. I was on, on with him this morning again, trying to push Aon to give us an answer or find a solution for that particular unit. New projects over in the jail. Got Lou moving their control computer. The computer that runs all the doors over there is still up in the tower. We're moving that down to the computer room so that they can have that screen and your other screens fall in one place, you know. They have to call up to the tower basically to have them open the doors. And they want to move that down to the control. So it's all located in one place and not up in the tower. That should be an easy move, you know. We've been lucky to have Lou. He's great on the low voltage stuff. He really knows what he's doing about moving it, so we, we don't have to call in great yet. Electronic solutions for hardly any of this stuff, you know. I mean, the, the door pads and stuff like that. But, uh, but we have used Lou for that for quite a bit, moving stuff around. Really saved some money there. He also pre-routed, I don't know what James said about the new antenna they got up there for the radio. I had him pre-route that so that when those guys came, we were in and out, cable installed within a couple of hours, you know. We had let them try to do that. That'd have been a probably a two-day ordeal for them. Because they, they just really did not know what they were doing when it came to writing cable into a building. So anyway, that, that went smooth. The nurse's office, I'm gonna start repairing the ceiling that has been falling down. It's basically just sheet rock where it has gotten wet. But I want to get that repaired and they want to rearrange that and just kind of update her office a little. We've got some cabinets to take down. Moving quick equipment around that she has in there. Nothing really big, just a little bit time-consuming for me to get in there and fix the ceiling. Jack is wanting handicap rails installed, installed in all the stalls now. We have not ordered those yet, but we do kind of have a list. There's like thirty of them that we need to install in all the stalls. And we have a shower door that's missing. And I'm trying to get ahold of the school and see if the welding class could manufacture us one of those. Be a good project for them and a low-cost option for us to have a door made. Waiting on a call back from Mr. Goodwin, so. Of course, over here in the courthouse, we still got our projects going on here. I've got the project with the master gardeners. We've got the greenery that we need to get planted before the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary to just brighten up the campus a little bit. I've got just a little bit of that order and we should be able to get it planted hopefully in the middle of October for this month or the end of this month. Get it planted so that it will be healthy come springtime. And we just got the greenery part of that ordered around the tree. Every shrub, the shrubs that we're putting in there. And someone, I believe, some of the ground cover that will go in there. And then come springtime, we'll, we'll plant our flowers to make it look red, white, and blue and look nice, so.
Mike, hold it thought just a second. So here, the, uh, this side door where the commissioners come in, I think we looked at that and we prefer not to have any, any landscape.
Right, I haven't moved forward with that.
Okay.
Other than the, uh, if we're wrong with a big pot.
Yeah.
That's what I would, we were there. It's just a big pot because we put salt out there. So we're trying to use anything that we put close to the building that's salt resistant. That's, that's where the master gardeners have come in. You know, they, they know their, uh, their stuff about that, you know. Yeah, we, we haven't approved any of that yet. So my big project is the trees.
I think the commission may have some input and Joe may have some good illustrations here. One, we had a question about, and I think Joe can address that.
Yeah, that would actually be the stop sign. Of course, Randy just talked to you there about the commission's interest there. But the stop sign right out here, Steph, as well?
Yeah.
Which kind of question in that.
Okay, that's a project that they, they want to do. The master gardeners wanted to do that one and take care of it. We just had to get approval from the city.
Yeah, I was gonna say that should be on the city end of it. Right, I just want to make sure.
The city doesn't do any of that. All the, all the corners that you see around here, it's been spruced up. I believe somebody else has taken care of those. But the city, originally, I think they planted some stuff just downtown. But the city uh, originally, I think they planted some stuff just downtown. But, but like the corner uh, across from this one, over there, where the uh, what was it there before, the uh, small business?
Chamber.
Chamber of Commerce. That one was planted by somebody that they had, I believe. I'm not, don't know, the master gardeners have been trying to keep that up and looking nice. They just want, they just want the match that aside.
Offset it.
Yeah, yeah.
Balance.
Yeah.
Yeah, my concern was that that would be more on the city and everything there that we didn't, yeah. Didn't wanna, of course, step on any toes of our neighbors and do anything there that.
Right, it's the size about that too.
Yeah, and I'm, long as we're going through the proper channels and dealing with the city and making sure everything's all right, that's all.
Already been contacted and uh, make sure we're not doing something that they don't want us to do.
You bet, appreciate that.
So we're working on that, um, so. Of course, we had uh, that little uh, deal with the lights. So we'll get, maybe they find some money to replace those uh, old style LED lights. When they're going out, they're actually catching on fire and melting. And we actually had one drop on the carpet over the weekend. And luckily it was just carpet, put a burnt spot in the carpet, you know. We have some of them here, you know, where uh, hands area, that would have burnt and maybe dropped on paper. We could have definitely had an issue that would be way more expensive than what we're spending on replacing the rest of the little lights. Yeah, we've been replacing them as they go. Uh, but most of them have just kind of melted, or one or two of them has melted and you can see where they've been on fire, but they just fall apart. Most of them landed on the floor. But uh, this one landed on carpet, kind of scared, scared me a little bit, so. We're gonna just get those in, they should be in, getting them next week. Cause they do have a, a lot of those in stock and so we were uh, fortunate there and that, since they come in, we will get the rest of those out here.
You bet.
And uh, let's see, now, we're working with Randy on uh, his evil ideas, so. We are just, that is just a project that we've uh, trying to see if we can get a good design and uh, get a good idea of what we want to put there, so. Anyway, uh, that's about it for me, uh, just general maintenance, so something pops up pretty much every day, summers.
You bet.
Okay, any questions for Mike? All right. Mike, thank you for that update and uh, we'll let you return to work, sound like you have a lot to say grace over, so. Thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Jared, welcome back, I sense you have a reason for coming back, so. I, I know you like us, okay, but.
I didn't have, I just wanted to uh, touch base after the meeting, so I just wanna hang around for a little bit.
Okay, okay. All right, next we'll go to the next item on the agenda would be a tax refund request. And this is for personal property, there's two of them in here, it's the same individual. One of them was the, was assessed with the wrong uh, package for the vehicle. And the other one was the same individual, same vehicle, but it was uh, assessed both on their business account and their personal accounts. So they're requesting two separate refunds, I've already looked at those, I'm gonna hand them down. And with that, I would, after we've had a chance to review those, then I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'm gonna make a motion to get these people some money.
Joe, how much money do you want to give them?
Well, I would say that I would go ahead and second a motion to give them five hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-two cents back as a refund for as far as.
On that one and then add the, is that just one of them go or is that both of them?
This here is just one.
Okay.
I didn't know if we need to do separate amount of monies, different or, okay. A motion for the five hundred and fifty-four eighty-two and then also to add in on that motion for a hundred and six sixty-one as well.
Okay, I did hear a motion to approve and I did hear a second. So now I'll ask if there's any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, refund approved. Next item on the agenda would be, uh, we had a request from a landowner uh, that would like to uh, vacate or abandon part of a road, it's Coolwater Road. Eric's been uh, in contact with them, we have a letter from them uh, regarding this. Um, there's no public funds been used on this part of the road for uh, as long as we know of. Uh, certainly appears more than five years. The length of the road that we have car funded, seventy-two hundred and seventeen point seven-six feet. We're uh, uh, considering and will set a date to have a public hearing on that for statutes. It would uh, then be reduced to sixteen hundred and fourteen feet and that would be from Highway Z to the uh, power line where the property owner's um, property line starts. And uh, and then at that point, we would uh, after that hearing, we'll contact MoDOT and we'll have that um, additional length removed from car funding. It goes back in there nearly a mile, uh, so Eric, thanks for um, getting this done and I'd like to set a public hearing probably minimum of two weeks from now, since this is the first time we've talked about it. So probably maybe on the twenty-first and I don't anticipate any uh, remonstrance on that. The landowners in agreement, we've not maintained it, it just makes sense, so uh, this is the twenty-first, sounds okay to both of you. Okay, then I'll set that, uh, I'll get that on the uh, agenda. Any questions about that? All right. All right, seeing none, last week I think we had uh, appointments uh, that we were unable to make for Senate Bill forty. We hadn't received any responses back, so we contacted um, uh, Ms. Kimery. And she has secured three um, individuals who would like to continue to serve on that board. So I'd like you to look at that, those would all be reappointments and then their terms would uh, would extend to uh, twenty-eight. And Eric, on the one, if you want to abstain on the one, I don't know if that's in order or not, but I'll leave that up to you. But we could uh, we could make two, two votes here and that way uh, you can.
Yes, I will abstain.
So then Joe, what I would do, I would entertain uh, a motion to approve the two, these two reappointments uh, that are unrelated to uh, to Eric. If you wanna make that motion, I'd be happy to second it.
Yes, I would go ahead and make a motion to accept the uh, reappointment of Rebecca and Ms. Laura as well to the SB forty board.
Okay, and we have media here, so I'm sure they might be asking a question, it's Rebecca Johnson and Laura Miller. Uh, you made the motion, I will second that, any further questions? Uh, actually, I second that one, Eric.
He's abstaining from this one, so Eric can second this one.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Now this next one then.
I would make a motion for Ms. Valerie Lindsay to also be reappointed to the SB forty board.
Okay, and I'd be happy to second that. Any, any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All calling same sign and Eric will. All right, so we got that board fully populated. Next item would be general county business. Don't everybody speak at once.
Uh, most everything that I've had is, like I said, most everything's been taken care of and been going just on a day by day. Couple of phone calls here and there, everything seems to be going pretty decent, pretty smooth.
Okay, I do two, have two things and since Eric's back in the room, uh, Jared back in the room. Where did Eric come from? Uh, I think he came from down there.
Yeah.
So Jared's back here and Eric's down here.
About the east side.
Since Jared's back in the room, there are two things. One, I, I wanna bring up Kentucky again. Uh, we've got a box culvert over there and I'd like to get it installed by the end of the year. We still have good, good weather. Uh, it's my understanding, one individual maybe has looked at some specs on that. But I think what my recommendation would be to the commission would be, let's, let's get that out for bid on the concrete work. Anybody can call and contact Jared, he can, he can show them the uh, what the plans are and then uh, and then we'll get that, that rolling. But once we get that legal notice out and then I think that sets us up for um, you know, trying to get this done before bad weather hits unless we have uh, summer all winter long. So if you're in agreement with that, I'd like Jared to uh, get with um, Mike on getting a legal notice out. And uh, she can help you with that and uh, we'll, we'll get that project rolling along, okay? And I think as far as uh, if you look at the most recent budget report and I think we'll get a uh, after the warrants are paid Thursday or Friday, we'll get an update. Uh, but it looks like we'll have enough in the Rock, or not, well, we very well could have enough in the Rock budget to uh, to uh, to fund this, I think that was our intention, we did put money in there for that. I'm just not sure we put enough in specifically, so we may have to pull then some out of uh, out of fuel uh, when that, when that time comes. So that's the uh, that's the first thing I would like to bring up.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good deal. Uh, I have initially talked to one guy just to kind of get a little bit of a variance on, about what it could pertain to as far as cost and you know, we need to get it out there for bids and see, to where we would actually be.
And Joe, to that point, I'd looked up the previous one and it was a lot more than my memory recalled. Uh, and this one I don't anticipate would look much different.
Correct.
So it's, it's gonna be a little, little chunk of uh, money there.
Yeah, there's quite a bit there and, and with that happening, I spoke with Jared there a little bit and stuff and it could even be one of those things depending on how our other work and stuff is going. Look at it, maybe even have some possibility in-house, we're taking care of that as well.
And I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, um, so.
Timing and other work, of course, we.
But, but if we go ahead and get it out for some bids, okay? All right, the other thing I had was uh, with the Ag Tur being uh, postponed this year, just with the just with the staffing that was needed to help make that happen and then the way that was redirected through uh, through MU extension. I, we had set aside four thousand dollars for, to help support the Ag Tur this year. What I'd like to recommend is to uh, consider a two thousand dollar um, to help the four H program. Um, of that four thousand, I, I would recommend two thousand to support four H. When the commission, I guess three years ago, we looked at this during budget with MU and we really wanted to engage more and we wanted to um, shine a light on agriculture in Leclene County and what it contributes to the local economy and we also wanted the youth component to that. Uh, we had really good support the first couple of years and I believe it will uh, it will come back. It's just this year the timing would not, would not allow to work effectively and we didn't wanna do that. Uh, we've had good support from the community uh, this Saturday evening, I believe, four H recognition or award night. And one of the local financial institutions will be presenting two two hundred and fifty dollar scholarships. One will go to a four H student, I believe one's gonna go to an F and B student this year. And um, their new year has started, I think October first is the four H new year. And um, so I would like your thoughts if there's any consideration that we uh, would like to do that or, or not. But uh, but I believe that would be uh, a good repurpose of that budget to help support the four H program.
Yeah, I believe that would be a good deal, I mean, we've actually, we've got the money in there that we had for other program, that still falls in that same line. So I would say using half of that would be an awesome deal to do myself. That can be well, well warranted for sure.
Would there be any, from the budget perspective, is there any? Uh, it would, it would be targeted to the youth, not administrative uses or overhead. It would be targeted for, for youth. I'd spoken briefly with uh, Leslie Lawson and was asking for uh, their thoughts on this and it's not gonna go to buy shotgun shells, you know, those, they have a good shooting uh, uh, program over there, but it's not going to go to things like that.
More into the ag base of it has to do. More into the ag base of it has to do.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that I would be for.
Okay, and there might be some opportunities for some of the youth to participate at a different level than they have now. And I don't have a, 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 uh, li- a list of what all that will be used for at, at this point. But with the permission of the commission, then I would like to pursue that and make that available. Okay? And the money's already been budgeted, and then the, then the remainder of that, um, will just, that'll just roll into next year's, uh, cash balance. It'll be available for uh, county, county purposes. And we'll, we'll see what an ag tour might look like, uh, in twenty-six.
You bet.
And also in twenty-six being our two hundred and fiftieth year, I, uh, I'll just think out loud right now, it'd be nice if we had some ag component to offer as part of our two hundred and fiftieth birthday next year, America's birthday. And I, and I don't know what that would look like, but it was just something that, uh, that came to mind, whether we had a, a, uh, so be rolling that around, all the pre-dead juices, get them flowing, and see if there's anything that we can tie into, uh, to an ag tour next year that would also maybe tie into our nation's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Keeping in mind, just, uh, if we, if, if we wanna continue that concept of, uh, focusing on agriculture in Lakeland County.
With that being said, I'd like to remind that I will not be attending next week's meeting on the fourteenth for doing the ag education deal with the Missouri Bank at the Stockyards here in town.
Okay. You wanna give the, anyone in the room a little more detail on that? Joe, it sounds like it's a really...
Uh, this is a deal that's been going on for about three years now, uh, and everything. You take, uh, your local youth and stuff like that, mainly your juniors and seniors, but they've implemented bringing in some eighth graders to give them a little bit of a initial outlook on, uh, how the buying and selling process of your cattle and stuff come into effect and how all that works out. Uh, and it's, it's an all-day-long deal. I mean, we'll, we'll be there from about eight o'clock till about two thirty, when the kids have to get back on the buses and get back to their schools and stuff. But got two hundred and ten kids coming this year is what's signed up for it. That's a, that's quite a few kids, so. Uh, this thing has grown. Josh Arl has done a great job with it and everything. He has got people, I mean, Joplin Stockyard's gonna be doing one, Springfield doing one. Uh, he's got MU is sending down professors and everything else that's coming in to actually help out and mentor. And they've looked into it, and they said this is a great program, and they wanna be involved. So I think he's got like seven different professors coming in.
Wow.
Yeah, so I mean, there's, it, it's a huge deal. You know, it's, uh, I think Josh said that right now it's like the second or third largest gathering of an ag deal next to Farm Fest. That's in Springfield, so it's happening right here in Lakeland County. That's a pretty good deal. It's a pretty good deal, and it all goes all around ag, and ags and, you know, most everything that happens around here. Uh, and it has to do with all the youth. And that's another big part right there, a huge part, you know, a tenth of those to keep continuing on. Then at least we can all still eat. You know, so, and keep going.
We like to eat.
We do like to eat, that's right, so. But yeah. It's, it is, it is a great program.
Yeah, fantastic. Eric, do you have anything for general county business?
No.
Okay. Alright, public comments items listed on the agenda.
Uh, with Coolwater Road, when the county abandons a stretch of road, does that in effect become private, or how is that approved?
It would, uh, then revert back to the property owner or property owners, if that were the case. In, uh, in this instance, there's just one property owner involved. And so that, that part will revert back to the individual property owner. Alright, routine business. So I have a question, maybe this is for the sheriff's office. Um, the recording format's changed a little bit, but, um, I guess it has essential information, right?
They changed the software.
Changed the software, okay. That makes sense.
This is the beginning of the new tax year. So this is setting, we are setting between the three offices, looking at and setting our initial start point on taxes to be collected. And this is part of getting to that start point. Everything that happened in the time of August through the Board of Legalization, things like that, is in a September leave, setting September up. And if we, that's where I walked in. And if we, um, find that all things are well, from the assessed values that's been worked up and the levels that's been transferred and the collections that's been calculated, which is what we're in process currently. If we find that all three of them, all three of us say go, then Toni will begin to start working on her tax statements.
Can't wait. Christmas in November, or October, huh?
Are you certified to the state?
You have certified to the state.
We're, I'm checking it right now, what we are certified to the state. And if we find it well, then we'll notify her. The senior tax credits will be largely noticed this year for those that have signed up for it. When you get to that back page, I believe.
This one, or this one? This one?
Is it whole? No, okay. Maybe I'll be the one to show that around the taxpayer.
Well, you gentlemen are looking, did I? Does it underneath here matter? See what I'm saying? The children had something, maybe then work back down. Other than that, it still has some numbers over here that's below two. So you're...
There's something like that.
Mm-hmm. It's only the A B and so forth. Collection of thousands of files.
Maybe I should have stayed.
See. It seemed like that one has a number.
Yeah.
It's not been reconciled, only this amount's been reconciled already. So.
I wonder if that stays here. Tax rates.
And I don't know, I don't know, it could be, I don't know. I don't know, I'm looking to see, maybe I'm not doing it here. It's not looking like it. This is the labies, which goes back to...
That's a, that's a good thing.
Mm-hmm. That might not.
Sixty-four.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Make a hundred difference, maybe.
Maybe I'll...
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Blue lines underly text you up. That free box from back there. Maybe you can jump back over there and kinda get back toward yours, maybe, and see.
Yeah, let's see, I must have had a dumb one.
Mm-hmm. Here will be equipment, personnel. Just so I kinda know where to go from there. Personnel. Okay, so we want to, uh, go into closed session then.
Gotcha. Get me special one. What's that? I don't know, which we, had a lot to go through already.
Coffee?
I've got the stains back too. I think some members sat sideways. I don't know which way to flip some of the papers. I had almost two bits worth there, God.
I missed one there.
Just folded down.
Oh. Mm-hmm.
I'll give that back.
Yep, you slipped through that one.
Snuck one by me, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, guys, I'll keep these together. I'm not gonna pass the book. I'm just gonna do the sheets. Those should be a cleaner version of what we are looking at, but it might make it easier. Do you want segment number two?
Oh. Multiples here.
Yeah, I'm just keeping the book out of the passing. This is, it should be, yeah.
Yeah. And you just want these initials here on...
Just the top sheet. Do you really like an initial on the top sheet?
In, uh, front cover sheet or all of them?
Just one.
Pretty much all the same deal, huh? Hmm. You've got the front page. I don't have it. Two times. This is not written, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, I should have she talked to you. Okay, and so we've taken care of routine business. Is there anything else there? Okay. All right, uh, then we're now down to public comments. Individuals who wish to make comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. Okay. Did we know if Lindell had anything this morning?
Uh, he hadn't spoke to me previously through the week, so I don't know.
All right. If you don't care, because we're, once we go into closed session, then, um, don't want to keep them waiting if, if we don't have to. Nope.
You may.
You may, okay. All right, well, I guess if, uh, he returns and he can wait. Okay, so media, Jack, anything? Nothing? Okay. Thank you for covering our meeting today. Uh, at this time then, um, our road bridge foreman, uh, has something to bring to the commission's attention and I understand it's personnel matters. So at this point in time then, I would entertain a motion to enter, uh, closed session for the purpose of personnel.
Motion entering to closed session for Jared's request for personnel reasons.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote please.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Yes, we are now in closed session.